Good evening, everyone. This evening, let us bow our head for a word of prayer this evening. Heavenly Father, we ask that you move throughout this land and heal our land. We ask that you cast out anything this evening that is not of you. Heavenly Father, this evening, we hope that you will speak a word of peace to our land, and the winds and the rain, Lord, will cease. Heavenly Father, this evening, help us to embrace the theme for our school district this year of Mission Impossible. Mission Possible, excuse me, Lord, Mission Possible. Lord, help us this evening, Lord, to be ever mindful of you and how good you are, and how much grace you impart on us each and every day. Heavenly Father, we ask that you put your arms of protection around our school board this evening. Help us to realize, Lord, it takes a village to raise our children. Heavenly Father, we ask that you go with all of us this evening, and help us to do what we need to do, and always keep our mission, Lord, ever in front of us. And we will be so careful to give you all the honor and glory that is due you. And it's in your name we pray, and it's in your name we count it all done. Amen. It's called this meeting to order. Is there a motion to accept the agenda for the, adopt or propose agenda for this evening? It's been, the motion has been made by Mr. McDonald and second by Dr. King. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. And opposedes, the agenda stands adopted. Could I receive a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda, which contains the minutes from the July 16, 2024 board meeting minutes? It has been moved by Mr. Roberts and second by Ron Blackman, that we accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. And opposedes, the consent agenda stands approved. This evening, we are happy to have in our presence this evening, Sir Martin Kahn from the Chronic Independent, thank you for being with us this evening. And for all those in administration that are here this evening, we thank you. And for all those who may be listening this evening by social media, we thank you for your attendance and your presence this evening. We do not have anyone that signed up for public forum, but at this time, for our old business, we were looking at policy, board policy review, and this is for approval this evening. Let me say something before, Mr. Ferris, those come up this evening, that at the last meeting, there were some questions about that policy. However, I think everyone has looked through that to make sure that all the concerns have been taken care of. And Mr. Ferris, if you will come forward this evening, we know this policy is up for approval. And I hope that the board members did take the opportunity to go back and look at the concerns that you had, and they were addressed.
Good evening, Ms. Hallie, board members, Dr. Goen. We're bringing for approval tonight administrative rule JKD-R. At the last board meeting, there were three items that you highlighted for us to look at. The first item comes on page one, and we highlighted in yellow, if the student asks the administrator to speak with other witnesses, the administrator will do so if available. The second issue came on page three. And after an appeal is requested, the principal or hearing officer at his or her discretion may postpone the suspension until after the appeal process is completed. And then the last item was on the last page, page five. And we struck through most of that paragraph, but we left in there that it will be the responsibility of the student to make up any miswork within a reasonable time as specified by the teacher. And so students who are suspended will have an opportunity to make up miswork, and it'll be on them to come, to talk with their teacher to make sure that that work gets done. So I'm here to answer any questions about these changes, if you have any.
Yes, Chairman.
Yes.
So one of the big concerns I had was about the request for consultation and, you know, the review process. In looking at the policy, the revised policy, I still had some concerns about the timing of the request versus, like, a parent has until the end of the next day, but the suspension is already in place. I think logic has to prevail here, that if my child is suspended, a true and caring parent is going to reach out ASAP, and logic prevails. So I think you did a good job on this. I read it, and read it, and read it, and finally just went, a true and caring parent is going to move pretty, pretty quickly, and administration will act that way. So I'm fine with the policy, and I agree with the way it stands.
Are there any other questions from any board member? Can I get a motion that we accept the policy ARJKDR, suspension of students, for approval this evening? It was moved by Mr. Tom McDaniel, second by Mr. Ron Blackman, that we do accept the board policy review ARKJKDR. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. And opposedes, the policy is accepted. Thank you, Mr. Ferris, for all your hard work. The next item of agenda is the chairman's report. I do not have a report, but I do, I would like to remind the people that were scheduled to go to Charleston this weekend to the school law conference from August 10th to 11th on 2024 in Charleston, that you have your packet, and that you know what you need to do to turn in to Ms. Wendy, et cetera. And hopefully, it'll still be on. But that's all that I have as far as the chairman's report, that the school law conference in Charleston this weekend. Next agenda, the superintendent's cabinet report, the summer project update. Mr. Billy Smith.
Madam Chair, while Mr. Smith is setting up, if I can make just a couple of comments about the opening of school. We had an extremely smooth opening of school in spite of the weather that we've had these past few days. I know that anytime we open school, there are always the there are always the things that have to get settled in during the year. And just like normal, we are seeing some traffic issues that we're working on. It's interesting that three or four schools, we actually did work on the traffic pattern over the summer. Some of that was in conjunction with the fire marshal and some requests that were made about fire lanes and how we were using those for pickup and drop off. Some of those were increasing capacity. Watery Elementary School, we had to do some widening of a lane in order to be able to use it as drop off. It worked very nicely. We seem to have no trouble there. Lugoff Elementary School, we did some modifications there at the request of the fire marshal. We're still having growing pains. There's a lot of traffic there in front of Lugoff Elementary, and it all converges. There has been a request for a traffic study through DOT, through our delegation for that area, and that does definitely need to be studied. I'll be honest, it's going to take an engineer smarter than I to figure out how to bring all that stuff together, because it's just complicated. Jackson Elementary School, we made some modifications. Mr. Smith actually was there both mornings last week, and he basically told me there was nothing to report, that, you know, it was a normal opening of school. And then if you've, later in this presentation, you'll see an aerial shot of Midway. We increased the drop off line by three times at Midway School. And so that's gotten all of those cars off Highway Number One that's there. We, up in the north central area, you know, three schools all on one corner. It takes a little bit of time to get everybody used to what to do and to settle in, but I understand it's coming along better each day. Hats off to DOT. That might be the only traffic light I've ever seen that really works the right way, the way they're supposed to. But hats off to DOT. That is an amazing, once you get it settled in, that's an amazing process. The one, though, that sort of caught us a little bit off guard was Stover Middle School and Blaney Elementary School. And it's not as much of a, there are some things we needed to do at the school, but there's a few neighborhoods that have built out in that area and sort of sold a lot of houses in the last three or four months. We've got a lot of extra traffic there on Smyrna Road that's not related to the schools. And that first couple of days, we actually had gridlock. I mean, it just locked down. Nobody could go anywhere. Billy and I went over and did car rider line duty yesterday. It's been a while since I've done car rider line. Yeah, we took Tim, Tim was all over. He was at Blaney, he was everywhere. And, but we, certainly, things are improving there, and I understand it was even better today. So, you know, the first two weeks, it's always a challenge, but did want you to know that we're aware of where the challenges are and are working with those schools and, you know, feel like we'll get back to normal. Lugoff Elementary School is going to be the biggest challenge we have, though, because it doesn't look like there's a short-term fix for that issue. So, Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew we were aware.
Thank you very much, Dr. Goodwin.
Madam Chair, may I make a comment? I had the opportunity, and I know everybody else did, but some of you have to work. But I had the opportunity to go out to some of the elementary schools. And I want to brag a little bit about the schools, the Principal Goodwin and Principal Gardner at Camden Elementary and Mr. Gardner, Principal Gardner at North Central Elementary. But I don't brag on the kids. I have coached football, which is, a lot of people think I'll be in the concession stand instead of coaching football. But anyway, I understand that. But anyway, I've been around a lot. If I could get my football players to line up as well as those students did and behave as well as those students did in the elementary school, I might be a better coach, you don't ever know. But seriously, I was proud to be there, helped the kids. The kids were so polite, and they were so well-mannered. Just the teachers, and I was able to interact with the children, sometimes with milk cartons and sometimes with the little napkin wrapped up. Becky was there, and Wendy sent out the email to everybody, so it wasn't just me. But those children are well-behaved, and the teachers, I give them all praise for the way they handled those children. And it was Thursday, I was at the Camden Elementary. Friday, I was at North Central Elementary. And I can't say enough about, praise enough about the way they are, are behaved and the way they act and the teachers that we have in those areas. And I know all of our teachers in all of our areas are just as good. But I want to take time to mention that since Dr. Goodwin brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing also, I know Ron was there and Matt was there, Ms. Hallie was there for the opening kickoff for the teachers. We haven't met since then. The excitement there just reminds me constantly of two things. One, how excited our teachers are to get back and how great Kershaw County is. It also reminds me of number two, that no game is won in the first half. It's always the second half. And kicking off again in January is just as important to get them motivated. I will say, I know we brought in some specialists. I wouldn't do that again. I just have Byron Johnson speak every time. What he did was amazing and just shows me the quality of the folks that we have here. The only lit down I will have is that my team with the trivia stuff, led by Ms. Becky Bean, was just really terrible. So we need to revamp what we're doing there. So just putting that out there.
Any other board members who'd like to say something about the beginning of school, our beginning of vacation and our visitation to the schools? Thank you, Dr. Goodwin. Okay, Billy, the floor is yours.
Chairman, thank you so much, board members, Dr. Goodwin. It's a pleasure to be able to come up here and even present some things. It's been so many years since we've had money. And I want to thank y'all and Dr. Goodwin and Brad for digging up some coffee cans and the, and probably a few ball jars of money so we could do this. But we had a very busy, we actually were able to get early, get started early in the spring. And this, some of the things that I'm going to share with you that we've accomplished and over the summer, and some of the things that we still have working that we hope to get accomplished very soon, that are either in the bid process or things have been ordered or they're in the process of being installed now. I also want to share with you, before we get it started, that I'm using this slideshow as a vehicle to highlight one of our artists and his watercolor renderings of our schools, our own very own Charlie King. As you know, we've got those hanging up in the old boardroom up there. And, but I wanted to use this slideshow to highlight those. He's only missing two. He's working on, I think, North Central, the new North Central Elementary School, and he's going to complete that one, and then he'll do one for North Central High. So you'll see that those two are missing, but they're on the way. So we'll get started with, they're in alphabetical order, I hope. But, you know, I got ADHD, and it might not be. I tried. Blaney Elementary. At Blaney Elementary, we used, funded, we did Escher-funded HVAC replacement throughout the building. We added walls to create new office and classroom space. We painted kindergarten hallway and classrooms, painted the library and main hallway, and also painted the art and music room. That's just a picture of the new units up on top of the building. And we had a deadline on that to get that done before school started. I think the money, we actually had time into August to actually, but we wanted to get them all done and out of there before school started. We're still doing some punchless items, as always. We've got a year warranty on these, so there'll be some work still going on. But it was nice to, these older units have the SR, excuse me, the old freon in them that you can't even hardly buy on the black market now. And so this was a very good reason. By no means gets all of the old ones that we need to get out of there, but it sure gives us a head start on it and sure helps us to save us some money down the road. Camden Elementary School. We painted one of the downstairs hallways and classrooms. We painted the group restrooms. We painted stairway handrails. We installed safe mats on the playgrounds. Camden High School. We cleaned and repainted the front parking lot, which means we restripped it, replaced main water lines into the building that were outdated and had locked up, and we could no longer isolate certain parts of the building. You'll get to see pictures of that. We were having to go out and cut the whole building off if we had any water leaks or anything, which was an inconvenience. We are replacing the softball and baseball field lights, and we have finished the bidding process for the security fence in front of the school, and we hope to finish that soon. And this picture on the left is the before. And then on the right is the after. And it took us a while to get all of the specialty valves and stuff that we needed, but we got it done and got everything up and running. And so that was a big lick. Camden Middle School. The Escher-funded HVAC replacement on a sixth grade hallway, just like we did with Blaney. Cleaned and repainted lines and drives in the parking lot, repaired, replaced group toilet bathroom stalls, painted gym walls in the halls near the gym and in the related arts area. And then we installed a fence outside one of the special education classroom that's prone to have kids that like to run. And we don't want them to run too far off into the neighborhood over there. So this is a picture of one of the air handlers that's up on the mezzanine over the sixth grade. And this is a picture of, actually, at Lugoff Elgin Middle, which is a sister school to Camden Middle School. It's one of the fresh air units. It was, they were, those were in such good shape because of our guys and what they do to keep them clean and do all the deferred maintenance work on them annually. We were able to reuse these and not have to repaint them, which saved us a bunch of money. So that was a blessing. Continuous Learning Center. We removed carpet in the multipurpose room and put down new flooring in there. We replaced the carpet in the front office area and put down new tile. And we also painted the restroom floors. And this is a picture of the multipurpose room, which is very much needed. It brightens it up in there. And that's a multi-use place. That's being, picture shot from the stage. So you can also use that for, you know, to do programs and stuff like that. And this floor will help us do that and not have the issues we've had with the carpet in the past. Dobie's Mill Elementary. We, a big project, one of the big projects we had, we had to regrade the side playground area. We were installed while we had to take everything out. So in doing that, we put back new playground equipment, irrigation and sod. That's all going in now. We replaced the sinks in the student restrooms near the cafeteria, and we painted the 500 wing hallway and classrooms. That's a picture a week ago of how that looks on the grading. This school was built kind of down behind the hill, so all the water runs back there. And we were having, for years and years, fighting issues of water, especially on days like we're going through now, of water coming back in through the exit doors and having to fight that. And I think this was the last one that we needed to take care of, and that'll stop that. And then that's a aerial picture of the new fire lane, which will also have basketball goals on it and then the playground going in. These are the sinks in the bathroom, and we did those at the ones right outside the cafeteria in the multipurpose room where a lot of the public uses it. Jackson Elementary. We painted the second and third grade hallway and classrooms. We added new wood chips and sensory stations to the playgrounds. And we installed the donated basketball goals that we got from Sand Hills Medical Clinic. And we appreciate that, and thank you very much. And we proudly got those in. And now the kids on the big playground will have some basketball courts to play on that they did not have before. We are in the process. Thought we could get it done now, but it'll probably be over the October break. We'll install tile on the walls of the group toilets, the gypsum board or the stuff we got in there now is pretty much giving up the guts. We repainted them until we got there, and they look nice, but they just don't hold up well. And so we're going to put tile in there to make that look nice. And then we refinished the multipurpose room floor. That's the multipurpose room floor. Brightens that place up. There's our two basketball goals back on the fire lane so the kids can play basketball now back there to choose to. That's the young kids playground, called the lower school playground. And you can see the drums and the different musical instruments there. That's the sensory things. And those are more for special needs students as well as the regular students. But that's something that all students are able to enjoy and partake in. And then also, on the upper playground, we did the same. You can see the four there nearest, and then we've got three over near the school, over there on the other side of the swings.
Billy, go back on the redoing the floor. Is that actual hardwood there, or is that just a rubber tile?
That is actually a poured rubber floor, mondo floor.
Can you pull it up, or is it permanent down?
It's permanent down. And we just recode it every few years.
Okay.
You'll see that at Midway also. Well, you won't see it at Midway. I didn't get that picture in there. I apologize. Lugoff Elementary. We painted the fourth and fifth grade hall and classrooms, painted the stairwell handrails, added swing safe mats to the playground. And we did the curb cut and added concrete and striping to create a fire lane to connect the front of the school to the back of the school, which we worked with the Lugoff Fire Department on that. That was a concern of theirs, especially with the traffic and the stacking we were having to do. So that is a picture of that. The left is looking from the back parking lot to where the buses come in to the front parking lot. You can see the car rider line there. And then the other one is looking back the other way. And so now, if it's clogged up in the front and they can't get around like they normally would, they can come in through the back like the buses do and cross over and get into the fire lane like they need to, or vice versa. So that is a good compromise between us and them and something that needed to be done. Lugoff Elgin High School. Again, this was the big Escher-funded HVAC replacement project for the gym, auditorium, and the lobby there. Just a little history on that. My, I came, I was blessed to get put in this job in 2004, and that was my first big project. So those units have been up there since, they've been up there for 20 years. Just before you look at the pictures, the guys that worked on these and maintained these units to get to them before we'd made the change back in 2004, those units were suspended from the ceiling with threaded rod. The guys had to use the lift and then put an extension ladder in the lift up through the ceiling grid and get it, climb up on top of the units and hang down and change the filters and the belts on those things. I said, I didn't know we had so many Spider-Men working for the. As you'll see, we were able, back then, to engineer some catwalks and put those up there. Now the guys can go up, actually, over to the sound booth. There's a door, they go in, and there's a catwalk system up there. And you can walk and do all of that and access the units safely and very easily. We also replaced all the whiteboards in the annex, the two-story building, because as we're growing, none of the second, the second story was being used. And so they've got four classes up there now, and they also use those for some other things. So we replaced those. We painted the locker rooms in the main gym area, which were the older locker rooms. And then we did repairs to the annex gym because they are now having a PE class that's using that now. The first picture is of the condensing units. And on the left is the old, are the old condensing units. On the right are the new condensing units. Good, clean job. You can see the piping job is a lot better and cleaner than what we had before and easy to get to and work on. Upstairs, you got your air handlers, and you can see the catwalk that we have. On the left is one of the old units. And then on the right, On the left is one of the old units and then on the right, you can't, you can't see them, but there's several of the new units that were installed. And you're wondering how they did that. And on the left, you can see we tore out all of the ceiling grid and everything was pulled out, dropped down, taken out the back, new stuff brought in, raised up, put in place and redone. On the right-hand side, you can see that we had to put the ceiling grid back in. And then on this slide, you can see the finished product and you can never tell we were there and it looks much better and cools and heats much better. So that was a big lick right there. And we got it done in time for the big meeting and kept everybody cool. Lugolf Elgin Middle School. Another Esther funded HVAC replacement project on the sixth grade hall as its sister school Camden Middle was. We also swept and cleaned the drives and parking lot. We painted sixth grade hall and classrooms. We painted and repaired the bathroom stalls and we're going to replace 25% of what they requested of their furniture, library furniture replacement project. We don't have the money to do it all. It was quite a bit. So we're gonna break that down in chunks and we are in the process of ordering that and getting that first, first stage done. On the left are the new condensing units that sit outside each classroom and Camden Middle is just like that. And then you saw a close-up picture of that at Camden Middle, but that's, that's on the mezzanine over top of the hallway. Each hallway of the three hallways has this mezzanine and at the end of the big hallway, you can see down there at the end that they're also. And so, so they were able to get those up. We actually go into classroom, take ceiling tiles out, drop them down, lift them back up and get them up there. It's a good clean job. They, they did a great job. Midway Elementary School. Midway got a lot done this summer. I don't think it has anything to do with me being a sixth grade graduate from there or nothing, but anyway, they, they, we expanded the car rider line. We added new parking. We seal coated and restripped the existing parking lot and drive so it looks like the new concrete. We refinished the multipurpose room floor like we did at Jackson and we installed a new playground, we installed new playground equipment there, which mine, I hadn't got to see them yet. I wanted to be there the first day, but I wasn't able to see those kids out there on them. First two days was too hot for them to use. But they got to use it yesterday. I don't know if they got on it today. They've been pretty slick out there today. And then we are going, we're in the process of getting bids to add fencing, security fencing back behind that school. That's one of the few schools we do not have that and we, we're gonna get that done here shortly. That's the new upper grade playground. We have switched to turf. You know, our other schools had the rubberized surface and then our older, the new, the newer, yeah, the newest ones we built had the rubberized surface and, and we found out it was costly to, we, we have to re, re coat those things every summer. So we went with a turf, which is a little more expensive than the rubberized, but you don't have to recode it every, you just have to blow it off like your yard, which we can do. And this is very, very, very nice. You can see the metal old slides back there. That probably still has some of my DNA on it where it took part of the skin off of me as I went down on days when it was real hot.
Billy, which one of those buildings were you painting chips on?
Oh, that's, that, that build is not there anymore. It's not there. But yeah, it, yeah, that very well could have happened. That is the, that's the lower sixth grade playground. Yes, sir.
Go back one slide. No, right there. How, how close is that umbrella to those overhead?
Oh, it's not. It's not. I, I, when I put that there, yes, sir. Yeah, I wouldn't, no, it's, it's not. It's not. It's, they're way, they're way above that. That, I can see, when I put that on, I said, somebody's gonna ask. Well, I'm sure it was gonna be you, but yes, no, they're, they're, it's way, way, way above that. Yes, sir. It's an optical illusion. Which one we, alright, this is, this is where we seal coated and restripped the, the existing parking lot. And then this is the, the extension of the car rider line. And now because, you know, it's always been a concern with Prestige Farms across the road, which they're a good neighbor and we're blessed to have them, but their trucks coming in and out of there and by there during intake and, and release were a concern when we had cars stacking up out there and couldn't get them on the campus. So you can see what we've done and that has, that is working very, very well and we're getting all those cars off and helping our parents and students be as safe as, as, as we can. There's, you can't see it, but down below where the bus loop is, we also added 20 parking spaces there now. You can never put enough parking around a elementary school, especially when they got doughnuts for dads or something.
Is there any parking in between the, in that middle section?
In this middle section here?
Where the, where the big loop goes up?
No, sir. That, that, that's actually, they can up front there, Matt, but if you see back there to the back, that's actually a retention pond with a fence around it.
I got you.
But we can use some of that. Yes, sir. That we couldn't before, that was all woods like it is around it. North Central Elementary School. We added large rugs under the water fountains. Just so you know, we, we let principals give us their top five priorities and, and then we look at them and, and with the money that we have, we try to divvy it up as, as much as possible. We also go by, you know, is it a safety issue? Is it a curriculum issue? Is it a comfort issue? Or is it just something they want? But we, we, we try to get as many of those done as we can for each school and, and that's one of the things they ask for. We, we are in the process of building a storage unit to store the tables and chairs that they, they are storing on stage, that their, um, their music and I think they have a drama or something going on there that they ask that they have a place to store those other than there. So that's, that's in the process of being done. And then we're working on with design specialists for the, for the ball field addition. We haven't forgot about that and we're getting real close to get, getting that done. And that's, that's the, the rendering, that's actually the blueprints for it, one of the pages of the blueprints for it. And you can see it off to the left there. And as you know, last year we resprigged and put irrigation on that backfield so they can play soccer and practice soccer and football there. And then the, the ball field, we can do kickball, softball, baseball and that kind of stuff. Hopefully we'll be doing that soon. North Central High School. We repainted the auditorium stage, replaced the auditorium carpet. After, after the hurricane, the carpet was good and we did not turn that in, but after all the construction and everything, we just couldn't get it clean. And that's too nice of a place to not make, look nice. So, so we ended up taking that. Of course, the auditorium stages we do periodically anyway, cause they, they get scuffed up and wore out. The black starts coming off of them, the wood shows. We added sand, sound panels in the auxiliary gym. After we built the auxiliary gym, we found out that teachers in there couldn't hardly hear themselves think, much less teach the students. So we went back in and we've had to do that at several sites. Watery Elementary in that entrance way, that hall, we, we ended up putting, finally putting the sound panels in there and it, it helps a lot. We painted, we are going to paint the water tower and add the school logo. We've got the bids for that and the painter, I think is gonna try to do that over the, um, uh, excuse me, the October break. And that's a picture of the auditorium with the new carpet, which is, which is very, very nice. North Central Middle School. Painted the seventh grade hallways and classrooms. We installed two new scoreboards in the gym, one at each end that'll do basketball, volleyball and wrestling. We installed a new sound system in the gym. That's in progress. We've got the bid and that, that has been ordered. And we replaced the turf on the practice field and that's the practice field. As you can tell, that's much, much better than when it had that love grass growing in Pine Tree Hill Elementary School. We removed carpet from the multipurpose room and replaced it with new flooring. We replaced the car rider line canopy that had got, Storm had got, finally got it taken care of. And then we added asphalt to connect the car rider line to the fire lane to accommodate additional car rider line drop off in the, in the back of the school. And that's a picture of the new canopy. This one is, is, we had re-engineered and, and is, is much safer and much more stable. And as we all know, if God wants to take it down, he'll take it down. And then that's another picture of it from the other angle. Stover Middle School. We installed two new scoreboards in the gym like we did at the North Central Middle. We've got some dips there. We, we've got a floor special, gym floor specials looking at that, going to see what we can do about that. That's in the process. We're gonna clean and replace the curtains on the stage. That's, those have been ordered. We are, we have painted accent lines in the gym and we've repaired the broken, we have repaired the broken bleachers. And then that's the gym with the new scoreboard and the fixed bleachers. And you can see that gold accent line that they asked for going around the edge. Good looking gym. Something for those students to be proud of. Watery Elementary School. Painted the front office. Back behind the, the front desk there, there was a color there that, that, that they decided they didn't like. So we, we, we repainted that, replaced the carpet at Wella, which I call wah, because that's where all the third graders are. When you go in there, they're all crying and whining. But those, they had old carpet in there and we took that out and put tile down and got them some learning rugs to sit on. So that was nice. We had swing safe mats on the playgrounds. We added eight foot of asphalt as the boss, Dr. Goodman talked about earlier, and restripped around the back of the school to widen the fire lanes, allow for an extra car rider line in the back. We just use this in the mornings and it helps a lot to get those cars off the road and it gives us an extra exit off of Reclamation Road onto Wildwood in the mornings. And that's looking back from the bu, bus rider area and behind the cafeteria, back toward the old Watery Elementary. Back there, you can see in the background, the multipurpose room that we still use. You can see where we added there to the left and then that's looking back toward Wildwood. And that's the eight foot that we added there and that has worked out wonderfully. And the Lugolf Fire folks are very appreciative of us doing that. They still have plenty of room to come in with their trucks, including their ladder truck and do what they need to do should we ever have a fire. And Willer Technology Center. We repainted the school entrance ways and installed a new doorway between the mechatronics lab. As you know, we were always looking at things. We don't always get it right the first time, but they were actually having to leave what I call the dirty lab where they actually do their projects and stuff and go back over to the clean lab, which is the classroom. They were having to go in the hallway to do that. So if the teacher had, even though they had got big windows and stuff, if the teacher had kids doing projects in one and he was in the other, it was, it was not a good situation. So we put, we added a doorway in there and that is now in and painted and makes that a, a much safer and easier way to use those two labs. And that's everything. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman. Just, just a couple. One amazing job here. The, the question I have is, have you and budgeting already identified for 2025, the next set of repair or upgrades, 2026, the next set of upgrades, so that we have actually a deferred maintenance project with budgeting already preset for it?
As you know, we have finally completed, or actually when we finished North Central Elementary School, that was actually the first project that was recommended in the Hiri equalization, facility equalization project. We finished all of those. So that facility study is complete. It's time and we will be coming to you at some point in time to do another facility study to, to, to do, to do just that. But yes, we do have a deferred maintenance.
That's my question, not the study, but I know the study always recommends stuff, but there's also ongoing maintenance to say, this is part of our five-year maintenance plan and you may not get everything in one year, but it progresses because those HVACs, but they're sitting there for 20 years. I wonder should have been done maybe three or four years ago.
It would have if we'd had the money. They were on the list. Can't do it, you ain't got no money.
Mr. McDonald, if I could address that, that's exactly, if you notice on those HVAC projects, especially the ones at Camden Middle, Lugolf Elgin Middle and Blaney, we did a percentage of the building. Then what we do next year is go in and hit the next percentage. And it's the only way though we can do it and it, you know, the, the dollar amount is just too much to do it all at once. The other thing we've got to hit, we've got multiple playgrounds we've got to go back and hit. You would think that wouldn't be such a big expense, but you know, we worked on three different playgrounds this summer and, and we spent the, the budget. So we, we do, you know, continue. The other thing that is in the pipeline is we have not been buying activity buses in quite a number of years and those now are going on a cycle. And we have one, I guess, that's pretty close to being delivered and then the other ones will be in process. So we'll, we're, we're trying to put everything on a schedule is what we're trying to do.
And Mr. McDonald, just like the HVAC, painting, we try to do a fourth of a school each summer and, and, and we've, we've got a, we've got a rotation that, that we do and everything like that.
Every four years, the school's fully painted.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We do have that.
Just a couple of quick comments. Number one, Mr. Smith is right. When I would call him and say, I need something at Wella, I had to remember to say wah. That's how, that was how we talked to each other about that. Number two, I always appreciated how Billy would reach out to principals at a certain timeline of the year to, for, for a wishlist, so to speak. And, and I always appreciated the prioritization of it and trying to get some of it done every year. But I'm, I'm so happy to see that, that so many things are getting done now, thanks to Brad's work and, and Dr. Goodman and other staff as well, and including your department, Billy. And then number three, the question may be asked is, these schools are only a year, two, three years old. Why in the world we haven't do this stuff already? You have to go into those buildings to see just how hard they get hit every day. Not in a vandalism or negligence way, but doors, floors, walls, fixtures, hundreds and hundreds of times a day, the doors get opened and slammed and propped and pushed and the floors get trotted on, the walls get rubbed against. So I really appreciate us being more proactive rather than reactive and attending to those things along the way and having a, a, a maintenance schedule to do that kind of stuff as well. I, I really appreciate that, but worth noting, I think. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Billy and your team, for the comprehensive report. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss resignation retirements of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel and assignment changes and transfers of certified and classified personnel? Voice was made by Mr. Ira, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposes? Major.
Is there a motion to reconvene?
A move, second.
Motion was made by Mayor Eric and second by Dr. King. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We're back in session. In executive session we discuss resignation and retirements of certified and classified personnel, employment of certified and classified personnel, and assignment changes and transfers of certified and classified personnel. Is there a motion to accept administration's recommendation concerning employment matters?
Smooth, second.
Smooth by Mr. McDonnell, second by Mr. Roberts. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposers? Magic Harris. Is there a motion to adjourn with prayer?
Smooth, second.
Motion was made by Mr. Blackwell, second by Mr. McDonnell that we adjourn with prayer. Oh, it was Matt. Mr. Irish, excuse me. All those in favor let it be known by saying aye. Any opposers? Alright. Heavenly Father we thank you this evening for abiding with us. We ask that you lead us safely back home and help us to find all this well when we get there. And we'll give you all honor and glory that is due you. And it's in the master's name of Jesus I pray. Amen.